This evening, so I just wanted to let everyone know that we will be recording. Hi, my name is Gracie Simmendinger and I am the president of Downtown Council. It's great to see many other Downtown Council members in attendance as well as new faces. So for those of you that aren't aware of the Downtown Council, I'm just going to share a little bit about our group with you. We are one of 10 Chamber Councils and simply put, we care about the future of our city. Downtown Council represents Jacksonville's downtown business community, including major corporations, growing businesses and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. And we also pride ourselves in keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top-tier speakers to our meetings, and tonight is no exception. We typically meet in person on the first and third Friday of every month from eight to nine AM at the old St. Andrews Church in downtown Jacksonville and have breakfast provided by Bread and Board and coffee by Martin Coffee. Due to COVID-19 disruptions, I think all of us have seen some disruptions to our in-person meetings. We have been conducting all of our meetings via Zoom and will continue to do so through August. For those of you that have an interest, our next meeting will take place next Friday, July 17th, from eight to nine AM, and we will feature interim CEO Paul McElroy of JEA as our keynote speaker. This event will also be, as I mentioned, via Zoom and will be free for both council and non-council members. So if you would like more information or to register for that event next Friday, please visit www.downtowncouncil.org. I also want to thank the Chamber for providing us the opportunity to have this important discussion tonight. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank my fellow board members Laura Edgcombe, Brian Tuttle, Darren White, and Benjamin Alcorn for making this event possible. Truly without them, this discussion would not be happening tonight. Without further ado, I'm happy to introduce our panelists for this evening. Mr. Andre Wallace, he serves as the president of Jack's USA Partnership, the private nonprofit regional economic development arm of the Jack's Chamber. Jack's USA's mission is to be a catalyst for economic growth and capitalize, or excuse me, and maximize the region's unique resources to aggressively recruit jobs and capital investment. Andre and his team manage the business development, international investment, workforce development, research and marketing efforts for the seven counties that make up Northeast Florida. He is also the former CEO of the City of Jacksonville's Downtown Investment Authority, also known as DIA. He spearheaded numerous infrastructure improvement projects, real estate development projects, and economic development initiatives in our urban core. And over the course of his tenure at DIA, Andre leveraged more than 150 million of public investment dollars to create more than 800 million, excuse me, in private capital investments, which is a five-to-one return on taxpayer investment dollars. In addition, more than 2,500 jobs were created and recruited to downtown during his tenure with DIA. Thank you, Andre, for joining us this evening. Our next panelist is Ellen Wiss, immediate past president of the Women's Giving Alliance, an initiative of the Community Foundation for Northeast Florida. Women's Giving Alliance's current focus is raising women out of poverty. Ellen is also the vice chair for Lift Jacks, which is an initiative of business and community leaders working to eradicate generational poverty in Jacksonville. She serves on numerous boards, including City Year, Jacksonville Public Education Fund, Teach for America, and on the Committee for the Mayor's Youth at Work Program and the Kids Hope Alliance Literacy Task Force. Ellen is the co-founder and president of Read USA, whose mission is to ensure each child has books in their home. Read USA helps transform the lives of children at Title I schools and community centers by providing free, brand-new, high-quality books for students to grow their own libraries and develop a love of reading and lifelong learning. In addition, Read USA also provides summer tutoring jobs to teens in high-poverty neighborhoods by providing training, professional tutoring, and teaching support to raise the reading gains for both the teen tutors and younger students they lead. Thank you, Ellen, for joining us this evening. Mr. Kamal Gaspur is also a panelist tonight. Kamal serves as the Vice Artwork Financial Wellness Program Manager. Kamal couples his passion and his purpose to help those who are unbanked, underserved, and/or disenfranchised from traditional financial resources and solutions. Kamal's focus includes member growth and community outreach to support Vice Art members by helping them reach their financial goals. He is also an advisory board member of Vice Art Credit Union's Minorities Employee Resource Group. Kamal serves on the Board of Directors for the Cultural Council of Greater Jacksonville, and he is a former Chair of Impact Jacks and United Way's Young Professional Group Atlantic Circle. Kamal has been named one of Jacksonville's Business Journal's Top 40 Under 40 and Black Pages Magazine Top 20 Under 40. He was also recently selected as a member of Leadership Florida's Connect Class 10 and is a member of Leadership Jacksonville Class of 2019. Thank you, Kamal, for being here today. Obi Umana is another panelist with us this evening. He is a local attorney and entrepreneur. Obi is the founder and managing partner of Umana Legal Group. His law practice focuses on small businesses, personal injury, and estate planning. He also specializes in consulting for politicians and working with groups to organize and motivate communities of color to vote. He has worked with local politicians such as City Councilman Garrett Dennis, school board member Warren Jones, and State Representative Tracy Davis. Obi was also one of the lead consultants on a campaign to defeat an attempt at privatizing JEA. Obi is a Jacksonville native and is actively involved in his alma mater, the University of North Florida. He is currently a board member at Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Northeast Florida. And Obi and his wife Jane organized the Duval version of the Black Panther Challenge, where they raised funds to take over 350 underprivileged kids to see the movie Black Panther. It's a pleasure to have you with us today, Obi. Thank you. Whitney Meyer is also a part of the panel tonight. Whitney is the vice president and chief diversity officer at the University of North Florida. She advises university leadership on diversity, inclusion, and racial equity practices related to the recruitment, retention, and admission of faculty, staff, and students of color. She has worked at UNF in many capacities, but most recently worked in the president's office and managed the launch of two successful program camp programs, the Community Alliance for Success Program and the Fearless Women Initiative. The Community Alliance for Success Program aims to ensure that underrepresented students have opportunities to thrive at UNF and become successful business and community leaders. The Fearless Women Initiative prepares UNF's next generation of women leaders. Currently, Whitney serves on the Steering Committee for the ACE Women's Network and serves as the Marketing Chair for the African-American Faculty and Staff Association. Whitney is also a 2020 Jack's Chamber Hightower Fellow. Thank you, Whitney, for joining us this evening. I'd also like to briefly introduce our moderator tonight, Mr. Benjamin Alcorn. Ben is a general manager of the ServPro of Mandarin Jacksonville Beach, Ponte Vedra, and St. Augustine. He is also a board member of the Downtown Council and has lived in Jacksonville on and off since 2007. He is also an active Springfield resident for the last five years, and I'm thrilled to have him as a part of our team. Without further ado, here's Ben to get the event started.
Thank you, Gracie, for the introductions of our esteemed panel, and thank you for your leadership in making this event happen. Without you, we wouldn't really be here doing this. And I could not be happier to serve as the moderator for this conversation. Race relations and racism are often difficult things to talk about, especially when we're taking a look at our own city and our own local economy. Our hope here today is to start a conversation, and that's it, just to start. I have a few questions prepared for the panelists, and then we will open it up for a question and answer from the audience. So type in your questions via the Zoom chat box. While we may not be able to get through all the questions, please know that you were heard, and we will use those questions and topics to help arrange future panelists for this series. We believe these conversations are important, so let's go ahead and get started. Question one. We'll start with Kamal and then others. Tell me about a time you were treated differently because of the color of your skin. And/or as an ally, can you speak to a time when you witnessed firsthand a person of color being treated differently in your presence?
Hey, Ben, can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right, so thank you again. Thank you Downtown Council and the Chamber, the panelists and all the attendees for joining, and Ben, thank you, because I know you're a first responder, you and your family with ServPro. So I hope from this, we can have this conversations that can transition to action, and we can continue the conversation. For me, I've been discriminated, unfortunately, as it relates to housing, as it relates to employment, as it relates to law enforcement. And I'll stay on a relevant topic, which is law enforcement. And I can vividly remember driving from Jacksonville to Ocala, and I was pulled over. I remember like it was yesterday, it was Waldo Road, and I'm pulled over, and I instantly think about the talk. And if you don't know what the talk is, the talk is something that black and brown parents have to have with their children, their nieces, their nephews, their grandchildren, in order to ensure that they stay alive during a traffic stop. And so I instantly think, what do I do? What did I do? How do I interact with this officer? So two officers come out, one on the left side, one on the right side. I have both hands on the steering wheel, and the officer says, you know why I pulled you over? And I said, no, officer, I do not. And she said, your tag light was out. So, you know, I was unaware that my tag light was out, and she asked where I'm going. And I explained that I'm going traveling from Jacksonville to Ocala for work. This is when I worked SunTrust, and I decided to stay at home and get work done instead of driving to the hotel and working from the hotel. I wanted to get my work done and then go to the hotel, get a good night's sleep. And the officer said, well, it's a little suspicious that you're driving at night. And I said, well, you know, is there limitations when I'm allowed to drive? And she said, no, no, it's a little suspicious that you're driving at night, and it's a little suspicious that you're from Jacksonville. So now, not only am I being profiled based on the time I'm driving, but then I'm being profiled based on where I live. And then the conversation's to, well, you're in a drug-infested area. So you mean to tell me that Waldo Road, which is a major highway in Gainesville, is a drug-infested area? And so she said, do you mind if I search your vehicle? And I said, absolutely not, but I know if I say no, you'll bring the dogs, and that could take an hour, two hours, and I know I don't have anything in the car. I know I'm not doing anything wrong. But it was a simple fact that that is so degrading to be profiled, not only on the basis of your skin, but for a tag light, that I could have been given a warning, or I could have just been let go. And so the funny thing was, two more officers arrived, and there was one African-American black officer. He could not look me in the eye. He looked down on the concrete the entire time because he knew this was wrong. He knew that I was being profiled based on the color of my skin and the neighborhood that I was driving. At the time that I was driving, never been arrested before, and it's a tag light. And the most degrading thing about it was, they searched my vehicle. They absolutely thought I had drugs. They searched inside the engine, they searched under the wheels, they searched under the vehicle, they took my spare tire out, they took supplements that I had and poured it out on the ground to see if I had drugs hidden in there. They reached on the top of the vehicle that I had in time to see if I was hiding drugs in there. And so, you know, because my parents had the talk with me, I understood how to interact with police officers at that time. And there's many other instances, I know we're short on time, that I could mention. But this happens with law enforcement, it happens with employment, it happens all the time. And I'm not saying police officers, all police officers are racist or they're biased. There's some very good police officers out there. But these are things that black and brown people have to deal with on an everyday basis and really think through how they're going to deal with the current situation and make sure that we make it out of this situation alive.
Thanks, Kamal. Would anybody else like to add?
Yeah, I'll add to that. You know, I've had similar experiences, Kamal, but the one that I'll share this time is, you know, I'm an attorney. I go, but I do a lot of business work and real estate work, so I'm not in court at law. But every time I go to court, and I'm always going to court in a suit, I am always mistaken for a defendant as opposed of as a lawyer. There's been a few times where I have gone and I've walked. When you walk into a courtroom, lawyers can kind of walk in and get in front and get in the front of the courtroom and talk. And every time I try to walk to the front of the courtroom, there's a bailout that kind of tells me, this is for lawyers. I'm in a suit, I'm in a tie, and it happens almost every time. And so, you know, it's not as extreme as Kamal's kind of instance, but that's, which has also happened to me. But it is, it is, it is a thing that you automatically assume that you belong in this group. And so, and literally, I am dressed probably better than some of the other attorneys that are up there. And to see that happen every time that I go to court, it is, a lot of times, it's embarrassing, to be quite honest. You know, that you are, that there is an automatic assumption that you are not on this level. And so, you know, I think when we talk about being treated differently for your race, there's, it's a spectrum of things. It is, sometimes it's being pulled over like Kamal, but sometimes it's just not getting the respect that you deserve.
Thanks, Andre.
Hey, Ben.
Yeah.
I'm going to take you back to, I'm 52 years of age. Let me take you back to the time I'm eight years of age, 1976. America's getting ready to celebrate 200 years of independence here. So, in the school year, third grade. At the time, you know, I'm one of three African-Americans in this particular class. In a small rural town in Georgia, you know, they group you, you know. Later on, you figure out whether or not that's, you know, today we call it AP classes. Then it was called gifted classes. But I'm only one of three African-Americans in a class of 30. And a good friend of mine, at the time, we know we're kids. You know, he's passing out invites from his parents for the end-of-year party. And neither one of the three of us got an invite. And I didn't understand that because we're friends, we play together, played sports, et cetera. And, you know, I asked the teacher, you know, well, I can't get an invite. And she tells me to go talk to my aunt. So my aunt happens to be on another wing of the school, she's the fourth-grade teacher. So I go ask my aunt, I say, you know, I didn't get an invite to the end-of-school-year party. She says, where's the party? I says, well, they say the party's at the American Legion. She says, the American Legion is for whites only. And I'm at eight years of age at that particular point in time. And I don't really quite understand, she says, things in life aren't fair, and these are some of the things and obstacles that you're going to have to overcome the rest of your life. But you can't go there because that's a whites-only location. Now, that's the community center for my town, that's the only swimming pool in my town. So if you want to understand why some African-Americans of my age don't know how to swim, et cetera, it's because you're not relegated to be able, particularly in rural areas, at that time, being able to go to a community center, there was no Y, there was no Boys and Girls Club. You either swam on a creek or you swam on a pond, and if your parents didn't swim, you were unable to swim. So it was clearly at age eight in 1976, I began to realize that there's a different path for people that are not, that people that are white, and there's one particular path sometimes for people of color. And that was clearly a defining moment for me in my life.
Thanks for sharing, Andre. Whitney, you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'll share next. Thank you. So I think it's important to also share experiences that we have in your businesses, right? This is Downtown Jack's Chamber. So my husband and I, we enjoy traveling a lot, and oftentimes, we choose a five-star hotel. And I'm never, it was my birthday last year, so 2019. We're at a five-star hotel in Georgia. We're leaving our room, and I notice my husband, who is Colombian, long hair, kind of your Rico Suave type, so he claims, self-proclaims. And he was going to go out in a tank top, and I was like, you can't go out. I need you to wear a top shirt, I need you to have, you know, be a little more.
I had, it was a weird dream.
So what we, so we exit the room, and I see one of the hotel workers assist this family, this large family with their bags. We're leaving our room, and maybe three doors down, there's a large family. And so, we get to the elevator, we push the button, and I see the guy keeps looking at me and my husband. And, you know, you're kind of like, do I have something in my teeth? Or, I mean, my outfit is beautiful, but okay. So he come, we enter the elevator, and then he follows us, and he's just staring at us. And so I look back at him, and he almost chest out. Are you staying here? Can you stay here? Do you have a reservation here? And at this point, it's our second night, right? And we were like, yes, we're staying at whatever our room number was. And just the, you know, you try to stay as composed as possible, but me, I always want to ask a billion questions, right? What would make you think that? Why are you saying this to us? But it goes back to why I had to have an argument with my husband about why he can't wear a tank top. Because a lot of times, people will say, oh, you must be a grounds worker when we walk about the hotel, and they'll start asking him questions about flowers and things like that. My husband has no idea about flowers or the greenery space. But so, just as we're thinking about our employees, I think it's really important for us to make sure that everyone at all levels of your businesses really understand and have that cultural training. And I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thanks, Whitney. All right, let's see, let's go on to the next question. I think this is a, this is a big one here. We'll start right back with you, Whitney, and then others. What is the difference between diversity, equality, and inclusion? Why are they, and why are they important?
Yes, excellent question. I think it's always important before we have these dialogues that we start with the same language, right? You hear so many people talk about diversity, equity, inclusion. You'll hear, you'll hear the phrase D E I, and sometimes people get it cross, confused a little bit. So I'm going to do my best to give you all a quick little three-minute explanation. So diversity is, you know, what makes you unique? Is it your gender, your race, your ethnicity, your religion? A lot of times, people forget about religion, or your ideas that you bring to the table. While equity, that deals with fair treatment, equal access, and opportunity. And inclusion, those are the behaviors and social norms that make people feel welcomed. So with that, to bring all that together, imagine you're back in high school. Okay, so everyone, pick what high school you went to. If you didn't like your high school, pick the one you wish you went to. I went to Paxson here locally, School for Advanced Studies. And imagine it is around prom, right? So I've got my dress on, I'm really excited about prom, I've got my date, I've got my limo. So diversity first starts with, I'm invited to prom, I'm allowed to go to prom, right? All of us, we're all allowed to go to prom. The equity side is, now, all of us who are attending prom, we get to pick the playlist of the music we like, right? We're not just going to stick with one style of music. Then we end it with the inclusion piece, where now everyone's on the dance floor. Everyone feels like, this is my prom, this is representative of me, and I am welcomed here. And how that fits in the workplace is, a lot of times, and bear with me here, because I'm going to try to bring it back to how this can apply to you and your business. So for the workplace example, diversity. You hired someone who is different, who's diverse from you and your main group in your business. And you think, check mark, I've hired someone in the company, okay? First step. Second step, equity. Now, I'm to the point where I've hired multiple people who have diverse thought, look different to me, different cultural experiences, different backgrounds. And now, these people have representations on our boards, on our committees. They can give us a diverse viewpoint on different issues and topics, and this group of people can also change policy. And then we end it with inclusion. Now, we have a robust group of people, we're all acting as one, and you have an environment where everyone is feeling fully engaged and that they can bring their true authentic ideas and themselves to your work environment. And you may say, why is DEI important? Why should I care about diversity? Why should I care about equity? Why should I care about inclusion? And besides the moral factor, I won't debate here about that, but it increases a company's retention of employees and talent access. Employees tend to be more productive and positive, and you're able to better serve your customers. And in a recent McKinsey report, it actually showed that companies who had diverse kind of, and you got to remember, I think it's really important to say, it's got to be in your leadership, right? A lot of times, people look at diversity and, okay, we're hiring a lot of college students, so we'll start at the entry level, and eventually they'll work their way up. But no, in order to affect true change, and again, getting to that diversity, equity, and inclusion point where everyone is welcome, people are able to change policies, it's got to be at the leadership level. But you can actually see a 33% increase in your profit revenue. So there's an array of reasons why, and again, maybe we can go on to a deeper topic at another time. But I think it's really important for people to understand that you have to start at the top up. It starts with leadership to make a stance, to make a point, and say, moving forward, our company, our organization, we're going to move in this direction and have measurable goals with each three of those areas.
Thanks, Whitney. Anybody else like to add to that? I think she pretty much, pretty much nailed it. So thanks, Whitney. Next question, Andre. When a company approaches us about potential relocation or expansion to our area, what factors related to diversity and inclusion are important to them? What are they asking? What are they looking for?
First, listen, you know, Ben, let's break that down into a couple of different components. One is the actual recruitment of the business. And then you have the business expansion retention. When a company is seeking to come into Northeast Florida region, it's whom they're sending out to seek opportunities within your region. Normally, your real estate people. It's either they've hired a commercial broker, or it's an internal real estate person. They are only concerned at that particular point in time about, one, where's the building sites? What's the quality of life? What's the speed of certainty for local state regulations, business environment, cost, incentives? That's clearly what they're all focused upon. That is the numbers game for them. Once you're in a position to make the cut, make the list, then the top thing after you've made that list is the workforce skills that they're looking for. And they want to be able to know that they can get the skilled labor within your particular region versus some other region. That's what their major concerns are. So you have to understand whom you're negotiating with, whom you're dealing with. Because at that particular point in time, you may not even know, one, what's the name of the company that you're dealing with, because they may have a representative that they've hired. What you want to do is then get to the place where you know who the company is. Then you're able to really understand what is the company looking for from a skilled workforce standpoint. And then you're able to induce the conversation about diversity, inclusion, at that particular point in time. That's how it works for us in economic development, is getting to the person that you can have the conversation with. Because on the front end, a lot of times, we're not talking to the CEO of the corporation. We're talking to whom they've hired. Now, that's on the recruitment side. Once you have them here, and then you're working with them in terms of expanding, that's when you're really able to see what's the culture of the actual company. A company that we recruited here probably about 2003, 2006 or so came in most recently as of last year and said, we're really struggling with diversity hiring for our company. Can you help us with that? Tell me the type of positions that you have, tell me the skill sets that you're looking for, so that I can then go to understanding what skill sets they are. Then I have a better opportunity to go to on the president of UNF, the president of JU, president of St. John State River College, president of FSCJ. president of St. John State River College, president of FSCJ, EWC, Flagler, et cetera, and have conversations with them about, they're looking for these skill sets and they're looking for a diverse pool of candidates to choose from. And narrow that conversation down from diversity, they are looking for people of color. It is at that time that I have the ability to have that conversation because they, the company, has determined that it is important to them. But clearly, a lot of times, the company sending someone, talking about workforce and skills, they really have a need for certain skills. And it's a plus that they can get the diversity that they want. It's up to me and my staff to have a conversation with them to push that diversity conversation. And we do that to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Andre.
Sure.
I think that leads into the next question really quite well. This question is for Ellen. Can you share a little bit about how you started the nonprofit Read USA? And why proficient literacy is so important to our youth? What impact does that have on our economy or workforce? Whitney, maybe to chime in afterwards, but Ellen, to Andre's point about the skill sets and whatnot, can you, can you chime in on that, please?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question, Benjamin. And thank you for the invitation, Gracie. I'm so honored to be with all of these leaders that I admire and about this important conversation. And, and I appreciate that you are noticing that racism, literacy, and poverty are all connected. And all of my volunteer work has been centered in the areas of poverty, education, and social justice. And so when I came to Jacksonville, I jumped right in headfirst and landed in the, in a high poverty school, George Washington Carver Elementary School, and led a group of tutors there to help students with their FCAT preparation. And while I was there, I, I was in the classroom of a Dynamo young teacher who had, had the highest percentage of the lowest performing children placed in her classroom because of her ability to increase their gains in education. And I saw her, she knew the background of every one of her students, which is astonishing what these children are exposed to. And it's, and she knew their families, she had contact with their families, she, and, but she got up and she believed in these kids and they knew it and they felt it and they were performing. Every one of those students in her classroom were performing. And again, some of the lowest performing students in the school were in her classroom. It made a believer out of me and so I, not that I, I mean, I believed, but I really didn't, I then at that moment knew that no matter what background a child comes from, if, if someone believes in them and gives them and provides them with the tools, they can succeed. So I ran up to her and asked her what could be done. I'm not an educator, but what more could be done to help her expand her reach? And she said, my kids need books, very simply. My kids need books. They, this book, I mean, this school has never had a book fair and, and my, my kids need books. So I said, well, why not a book fair? Why hasn't the school ever had one? And she said, well, because normally PTAs put them on and they're, they're heavily resourced generally. And, you know, my moms care about their kids just like any other mom, but they don't have the resources to organize and put on a book fair. And when the kids come through the book fairs, they don't have the resources to buy the books. So I said, well, let's have a book fair and have every student in the school participate and remove the barrier of money. And that's what we did. And it was so heartwarming and all of the teachers reported that the kids wouldn't let go of their books. They were taking them into the bathroom line. They, it, it was so inspiring that we vowed to do it every year. And now we've grown with the help of many education groups. And we are now serving every Title I elementary school in Duval Public School System. And, you know, it's, when you see a kid light up with a book, there's, there's nothing more inspiring and, and makes you happy. So, um, and how does that, you know, reading is fundamental. I don't have to tell anyone, you know, here, you know that. You have to know how to read in order to learn. So we need to really focus and have a, an all-sector focus on literacy and, and in making sure that we provide what is needed for kids to learn to read. And, you know, there's some scary statistics I can put out there for you that are factual. There's two-thirds of children that don't know how to read on grade level by the end of third grade will end up in jail or on welfare. That's, that's fact. There's two-thirds of low-income homes that have zero books in, in their home. And the correlation between books in the home and performance is, it, it's really the only factor that, that correlates with reading performance. So I'm really excited that we're having this conversation together because it does link for, in order to have empathy and even understanding of other cultures, you have to know, you have to read. So here we are. How does this help? Well, it's again, central, literacy is central to obtaining and retaining employment. And it's key to social mobility as well. But race and gender play a greater role in shaping one's economic prospects. So we have to focus on both hand in hand. That's why I'm really excited about the work of Lift Jacksonville. It is totally linking, you know, anti-racism efforts in, in conjunction with healthy community in, in covering all bases. So, and that's what we're trying to do with Read USA as well. It's, it's just as much of a social justice effort as, as it is an education effort. So I hope I answered the question, I think. And I will make a business case. I will say that Governor's Office in Georgia says that every dollar invested in literacy returns $30 to the community in the form of reduced recidivism, better public health, engaged parents, and knowledgeable workers. So, and there's lots of other fun stuff out there that supports it, so.
Thanks, Ellen. Whitney, can you pick up from there and get into, you know, sometimes first-time, first-generation college, things of, things of that nature?
Yeah, thank you. So if you're just jumping in on the call, I work at UNF and we recently just created a new program called the Community Alliance for Student Success, CAS is for short. And fun fact, Andre and Obie both serve as mentors to our students on that program. But what we do is we reach out to first-generation and underrepresented groups of students who, you know, they don't have their families to, I have a hold on my account. What does a hold on my account mean? How do I pick my classes? You know, everything from, you may know what a college advisor is and how you actually go to a college advisor to help you pick classes. But to them, an advisor, they may think that's a therapist where you go and tell your problems to and not necessarily someone to walk you through the academic side. So what we do is we recruit these students and right off the bat, before they even get to UNF, and we really prepare them to succeed. And a lot of these students are local, a lot of Title I, come from a lot of Title I schools specifically. And to be brief, it's, you can be what you can see. When Andre invites his team of students, that's how we do it is we break it up into, so each mentor actually gets a team of students. So you get a team of eight to 10 students with a mentor. Because our students of color, they say, I don't necessarily want a one-on-one mentor because too many times in my class, I'm in the only obvious person of color in a class size of 50 to 100. So I actually want to build experience and camaraderie with people who can relate to me and understand additional factors I have going on either at home or at my workplace. So imagine Andre Wallace invites his team of students. And what's great is he also has additional tables so we can include other students who, pending the speaker, they're speaking on cer- certain topic that relates to a major. They sit in a prominent area. Andre always gives us a great table. And they see their mentor up on stage in a room of close to 1,000 people. And he gives them a shout-out. Do you know how that motivates this group of students? And then they go back and then they tell their friends. And then everyone's researching and now you're building contacts, you're learning how to network. You're learning business etiquette. So it's important for us with this program because once they see what they can be, now they're already building their network. So when they graduate, they now have options. And it's all about closing the middle-class gap, right? Because you look at it and you see, okay, generational wealth, right? Typically, white families, especially in Jacksonville. Darnell Smith wrote an article about it in, well, it's the Times Union, I think. So I encourage all of y'all to read it. It'll make a little more sense of what I'm trying to speak very quickly on. But pending where you grow up, you, it's insane of like just neighborhoods immediately next to each other. And that lack of generational wealth and how you're more likely to constantly be a renter versus a homeowner from generation to generation. And so this program, what it ultimately does is it helps close that gap. So that way now you have students who now graduate and they can invest in your businesses. They can purchase, they can become business owners, they become involved in government. We got to meet with city officials, thanks to Obie. So these students got to go to City Hall and figure out how they can join task force, right? Of how can I get involved in politics? You know, they are able to have these raw, vulnerable conversations that typically, they don't have anyone in the household to help guide them through these conversations and next steps. So for us, it's very important, when you think about the economic impact, is wow, there's this large gap of people who with some help and assistance, they can really help boost the city with, you know, financially, with ideas, creativity. And I'll, I'll stop there before I go on my long tangent, but.
Thanks, Whitney. I know Kamal and Obie both want to jump in on this. I'm going to let Kamal go first and Obie, if you could follow up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go really quick. Can you hear me, Ben?
Again.
Okay. So Whitney mentioned it and Ellen mentioned it as well. Disparities are intertwined. So if someone's financially stressed, they're likely to be mentally and physically stressed. If they're financially stressed, the likelihood of them having diabetes, hypertension, everything that Ellen and Whitney talked about is going to be prevalent. And one thing that I think we need to figure out as a city is that there, the disparities are just so broad. And what I mean by that, if, if you, if you don't know the ALIS study, it studies individuals that are living at or below the poverty level or one paycheck away from homelessness. It's 40% in Duval County. And if you drill down to that, it's zip codes 32202, 32204, 06, 08, 09, 32210, and 32277. So not saying you, if you live in those areas, you're poor, you're financially stressed. The likelihood, if you live in those zip codes, you will be. But then also, those are traditionally where Black and Brown people live. And to me, Jacksonville is such an amazing city. To me, this is one of the greatest cities in the country. When we want to get things done, we move it fast, we move it quickly, we make it happen. And so I think as a city, you've got to figure this disparity thing out. Because it's, it hasn't been happening for the past two years, four years. It isn't happening in the past 30, 40 years. So we, we've got to figure that out because we're better than that as a city.
Thanks, Kamal. Obie?
Yeah, yeah, I, I wanted to hop in there because I'm a product of, of that. I am, I'm on the board of Big Brothers and Big Sisters, but I was a little brother. Like I was a little brother, I was in that program. And, and if I could, you know, pitch that program, I would, I would do that. Because not only did I, and I'll tell a quick story about the impact of it. I'd gone to Jaguar Games on my own and we sat in Section 400 at the very top of the, of the, of the, of the stadium. My, my big, one day got us, well, I don't know if they, they still have these tickets, but they were like this, the club level kind of seats where you have, like you could, all you can eat, right? It was all you can eat, you could stay there super late. It was, and it was, for a kid, like it was mind-blowing that people went to games like this, right? And so it was for the first time, I, I realized that the world was bigger than my world. And so once I realized that, then I started to want to get to those levels, right? I wanted to, to be able to get those seats. I wanted to be able to kind of go after those things. And so, you know, as we talk about how, you know, the, the work that Ellen does, I volunteered at, at some of the book fairs and the work that Whitney does with these kids, it is a lot about opening and expanding their horizons because they don't have those opportunities to, to be a part of, to see how big this world can really be for them. And so I just think, if you look at someone like me, I am a product of people pouring into me. And that's why since I've been an adult, I've made an effort to pour into my community because somebody took that, took that initiative. And so when you guys are thinking about this type of thing, always remember that the kids that you're helping, you're not just helping them, you're helping generations after them because of that work.
Thanks, Obie. I appreciate you mentioning Big Brothers, Big Sisters. I was, I was a little as well. So I know what that program, the impact it can have on young kids. I'm actually going to probably go right back to you, Obie. How can we create a culture with more economic development opportunities for Jacksonville and all of its residents? Oh?
That is a great question. It is a lot, there's no, we're not going to solve that problem right now. I will tell you, it's actually interesting. I have a, like everybody else, I have a podcast. It's called Why You Should Care. And we're actually dropping an episode tomorrow about how you can be an effective ally, right? And wasn't planned to, to meet up with this, but it's actually kind of, because of everything that's going on, people are always asking how they can be effective as an ally. I will go through the whole podcast, you guys can listen. But one of the things I do, one point that I really want to make that came from that podcast was, was to, to, to make a plan. Like it's great that you guys are here, listening here, you know? But it is, it is workless if you guys do not go back now to your organizations and actually make a plan for help to, to do this, right? It is, and, and then as you are making that plan, you want to involve people from those groups in your plan, right? Too often, we make plans for people instead of including them in the planning and listening to them and asking them what they want or what they need. And so what I would say to you is the first step, there's a lot of different steps, but yeah, intention is so important and making a plan that is actually going to follow through. You will, there's tons of listening sessions and I think there's almost been one every week, right? Of people having these listening sessions. But after that, what is going to happen with you and your business and your plan? Are you going to plan to do that? And are you going to talk to people and help you make that plan?
Thanks, Obie. Andre, would you mind weighing in on, on this? How can we create that culture for more economic development opportunities for, for all of Jacksonville?
Sure. My lifelong friends, it's about five of us. We, we started off with education and we created this acronym called COODA, which is C-O-O-D-A. And so with education, it'll generate some choices for you. Those choices give you opportunities and those opportunities provide options. And those options allow you to make decisions and those decisions will determine your access. So what we have to do is create career pathways for everyone, no matter where you are, no matter whatever it is that you want to do. I mean, for, for Jacksonville, we have career pathways that we work from pre-K to 20. And that's with all the seven school districts within the region, as well as the state colleges and universities where we focus on advanced manufacturing. We focus on advanced transportation logistics. We focus on financial services. We focus upon health and biomedical, as well as IT innovation. But we forget that not everyone is going to go to a four-year institution. So how do you make sure that you have career pathways for the plumber, for the electrician, for the ACHVAC person, for the, you know, for the power line utility worker, for the brick mason, the apprenticeships? Making sure that you have a str-. Making sure that you have a structure, an economic career pathway structure that benefits everyone. So the greatest way to address what Darnell was talking about was that poverty issue, was the education factor. Because right now we have people that have gone through pre-K to twelve and didn't get the prerequisites skills to get into an actual career pathway that's now working two or three jobs, that may have one or two kids. So how do we take that particular person and move them from two to three jobs to a career pathway that now their kids see their parents into a particular career pathway that now say to the kid, you need to do the same? Then you begin to change that dynamic for the family in terms of, from the education aspect. And then they're able to move into various different access within life. That's what you have to have is that particular structure itself.
Thank you Andre. Anybody else like to jump in on that? Okay, I think, um, I think Darren White has been fielding some questions for me so that, uh, I could, um, go ahead and ask some questions and not have to kind of search through all the chat box. Looks like the chat is pretty active, which is awesome. But we do have a question from Amory Knight. When we think about race and economic effects, I would like to ask what other companies are doing to talk to their staff about what is occurring nationally, regionally, and locally? At UFHJ, we have convened listening sessions to offer all staff an opportunity to discuss their concerns, fears, and anger. This is done so staff from varying backgrounds get the opportunity to understand one another. This is an investment in their feelings, builds trust, and a spirit of collegiality that contributes to a healthy environment.
Ben, I'll, I'll start. At Jacksonville A, we have our staff meeting every Monday. And after the George Floyd travesty, it was a lot for me as an African-American male. And I began a dialogue with, with the staff with regards to what's happening in America. Um, that America's at a crossroads. And there's a couple of decisions that America's gonna have to face and make. And that if we don't do this now, the next eruption may be even worse than the one that's going on right now. And that is because my age group, I'm fifty-two again, as I said. I was three months old when Dr. King died. So my whole generation of people, my age group, we've been talking about how to fulfill the promises that Dr. King laid out. And the generation that's coming along now, whether you call them Gen Z, millennials, or whatever, they're saying, we need more equity, we need more equality, we need more inclusion. And we are not waiting on that. That's where the crossroads is for America at this particular point in time. Having that dialogue and conversation, as uncomfortable as it may have been, not for me, but maybe for my staff, it was important to do so. Because I may have a staff of fifteen and only three of us are African-American. So that means that I'm a minority leading a majority staff. So being in a position of having that conversation and open dialogue and truthful dialogue, um, I think was important for me to begin to have with my staff. And I think that they've definitely appreciated it. And it's opened their eyes in terms of seeing things, not necessarily from your lens. So much of what's happening right now is we see everything only from our lens as opposed to seeing it from a broader perspective.
Thanks Andre. I know Whitney would like to hop in.
Yeah, so same, same thing, right? UNF, large group of people, many constituents, students, faculty, staff, very much like you, Amory, where you also have your external groups, right? The many different boards, right? Each dean has a council, then you have your board of trustees, then you have your board of governors. I mean, the list, on, on, on. So we were really intentional to, at first, have some sessions for faculty, staff, and students all together, right? We did it via Zoom, same thing, facilitated conversations. We were crying together. I mean, it, it was some pretty heavy material. And then we continued the conversation and we separated it out, right? Students, we had a separate session for students. Cause very much like you said, Andre, students, they want change, they want it now. Our student government, they're writing resolutions with some very, um, uh, direct language. And so it's really, so you've got that constituent group. Then you have your faculty and staff, right? Sometimes they want to share things, you know, in a different environment than with their students. But what we've done, we've also, so once people, that was kind of the first two or three weeks. Then we said, okay, President Samansky. And I challenged all the other vice presidents. I said, I need you to come and I need you to listen. I'm adding this to your calendar. Because you need to hear that it's just not me, because I am the only person of color on our executive staff. So you need to hear, you need to hear what your students are expressing. You need to hear what your faculty and staff are expressing. Because if you're going to truly lead us, you need to understand us. And so with that, I would just challenge everyone on this call. If you're at a place of influence, where you can help make sure that those conversations can happen in your workplace, like Amory said, you've got to think of everyone right now. And we're virtually, so you can create a Zoom and make it happen. It's not, you know, oh, I've got to create this massive, large space. Or do what Andre did and start with just your team and talk to them. It's never too late to show that you care and that you're willing to change and do a U-turn. And to be honest and say, I'm sorry, I did not address this, but I'm here and I want to talk about it now. But I think it's important for those of you who sit on boards and you have influence of, you know, your executive cabinets in your offices, that you make sure you hold those people accountable and just say, hey, and as nonchalant as possible, hey, I'm just calling or I'm just emailing to see, have you, how have you been taking care of your employees in light of what's going on? I think it's time for us to challenge and ask those questions to people if we really want to see change. Cause then that's how you start affecting policy and I'll stop there.
Thanks Whitney.
I'll jump in real quick.
I've got another follow-up after that that I'd like to go to you, but go ahead.
Um, so yeah, so what, what we did was, um, I think the most transparent thing and thoughtful thing that was done was our CEO, Brian, sent a memo and started a dialogue and said, um, you know, there's some things that we could have done better. And we're going to champion diversity, equity, and inclusion. And, and his honesty and his transparency, um, if you don't know Brian Wolfberg, he, he's a visionary. He wants to make Jacksonville a great place to be. And he was just honest and open and upfront with all of our employees, that there's some things that we could do better. So one of the first things he did, we, we hired a rock star, uh, Ali Braswell, as the new VP of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. He's on this call, so I would encourage individuals to reach out to him. But that's one of the first things that we did. And he's going to help us change the landscape of Vistar, in my opinion. And then also change how credit unions go out and educate the community about financial wellness. So I just wanted to, to mention that, that that was something very transparent that I think every leader should do. And it's not just enough to just have the CEO talk about it. I kind of make, made this phrase, it's called the frozen middle. So your CEO, your leader's talking about it, but no one in the C-suite, none of the middle managers are talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that's what has to come all the way down until it reaches the final door. So I was, to share that.
Thanks Kamal. Um, I would like to sort of ask a follow-up to that from, um, Kimberly Allen asked, how do you ensure the burden doesn't rest with people of color to enlighten and educate others in workspaces? How have you been an ally or how have you, how have your allies make sure that they're not shouldering the burden of, of education, um, of the rest of their coworkers? Obie, you want to jump in?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start. I, I, I think, um, that is a, a difficult question kind of for both sides. I think, um, you know, I would tell you, one of the ways that you should start by doing that is making sure that you have a critical mass of, of black people in your, in your office. Um, I think, um, and when I say critical mass, I mean, like not just have one, you know? Um, not just have one person that has to kind of answer for everyone, uh, in their race. Um, you know, black people are, are different and, and I'm speaking for my, my group. But, you know, other marginalized groups are, they're in, in between those groups, there's differences as well. And so first off, you know, not making one person, um, kind of have to shoulder that burden is important. I think though, I do kind of agree with what Kamal is saying is that it needs to be, um, it needs to be involved with the whole up and down the staff, right? You need to hire people that have those values already. So you're not feeling like you're, you're starting from zero. And I think that's kind of the second part of that is make sure you have a group of, of, of a critical mass of people. So there's just not one person on those, in, in that group. But then start to make that part of your values. Every company has values that they, that they use to kind of hire people and move forward. But a lot of companies are, are, would, would say that they are, are not racist. But you would not find that in their value system, right? You wouldn't find them in that, in their written values. And so starting there, I think is, is, is where to start.
And I'll chime in, um, there has to be the openness for the dialogue. At the end of the day, if there's not an openness for the dialogue, you know, change will not take place now whatsoever. Um, I applaud Brian at Vistar for, he started the dialogue. Cause if he didn't start the dialogue, there would be no dialogue, none whatsoever. The change won't come just because minorities decide, people of color decide to have the conversation. We've been having the conversation for a long time. You know, so it's just a matter of when will the majority population get into the conversation and decide that change has to take place now? And we want to be part of the change. Without that taking place, there will be continuation of minorities having the conversation, eruption, majority of population saying, what's going on? Why is this happening? And disruption occurs when people are exhausted from having the conversation amongst themselves and trying to get you to understand what's going on and what is impacting them. So until people begin to seriously sit down and have dialogue and not be defensive. See, that's the problem in the dialogue and the conversation is, well, I didn't do that. Didn't say that you did that. Let's talk about the system and structure that is in place that impedes my ability to fulfill the dreams that I have. Let's start there with that dialogue. Because you would not want to have your dreams impeded now whatsoever. So why should another, why should people of color have their dreams impeded?
Thanks Andre. Um, we're gonna ask a couple, a couple more quick questions. This one's sort of for all the panelists to share their thoughts. There are people out there who want to help and support. We've, we've talked about that. You just talked about that now. Until the rest of us really, really want to make that, that happen. You've been talking about this for a long time. What can we do in Northeast Florida to help take, you know, put this into action? Where it's action on some of the issues that we discussed today? What are the action points that we can move on? Anybody?
I'll chime in. Um, one thing is what you're doing. Wait, ah.
You're good.
Can you hear me? Okay. One thing is what you're doing now. And I applaud what, you know, the fact that you're allowing this space for, particularly from the chamber to involve chamber leaders and others to engage. Uh, that makes a big difference. I know Dr. Allen, um, has led conversations with Nine O Forward and One Jacks. Um, and, and those, and, and if we, my biggest fear is that, uh, that, you know, this excitement, uh, will go away if we don't continue it. So, um, and I feel very hopeful though, this time, this time feels different. I feel like we have enough oars in, rowing in the same direction that we have a possibility for real change. And, um, and I hope, um, you all know, I am your ally. And I hope it speaks in, uh, in the work that, um, that I'm involved in. And, and know that, uh, this is, uh, you know, I don't want this panel to bear the burden alone. You know, you gave an example of Brian Wolfberg. It's a perfect example. It's, you know, leadership matters. And the culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion has to be in the, in the C-suite. It, it definitely does. And it has to, and then emanate out from there, has to be a culture of your organization. And we can't do that by ourselves. We need help with that. So enlist the help and, and walk the walk. That's my opinion.
Yeah, let me jump in there, Ellen. Ellen, thank you so much for what you just said. And I think this is going to sound weird coming from me because I work in the political world so much. But we can't rely on politics to kind of fix this problem, right? I, I, I think that is to me is, you know, the, the, the fix, politicians come every four, eight years, right? This is a problem that needs to start with this community, right? Like, and that's why I was, I was happy to be invited to the chamber community. Because the people in this room, when you guys talk, everybody listens. Everybody listens because that is what runs our society. And so if you guys are going to start making these changes in your businesses, in your other places, you will start to see these walls come down. I think we can't, you can't wait for politicians to act on, 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 on issues of social justice. We have to all kind of step in and play our part. And that part is going to be different for every single person. I think knowing that you're in this fight or knowing that you're in this, uh, awakening is important. But also knowing what your role is in this. And some of that is, some of you guys are hiring, some of you guys are managers. Some of you guys are, are, are going to see things that happen out in the publics or something like that. And just to know that you, you, everybody has a role in this, in, in this particular thing. But we can't wait. It needs to be from not only the politicians, but it needs to be from our business community. They need to lead this because that will improve business for everybody, right? And, and Andre will tell you, you know, it become a place that people want to move to and businesses are going to start, uh, wanting to be here. And so, you know, that starts with this group. And I, I appreciate being invited by the chamber to be, to talk to chamber people because it shows that you guys are moving in the right direction about what you want to do.
Hey Ben, this is Andre. Um, Obie's right. At the chamber, we are having these conversations, um, amongst our, our investors, um, amongst the community itself. And we recognize that when the business community decides that something normally needs to change, it normally takes place. And so, um, you know, Daniel has, um, has sent out a memo to all the members of the chamber that we are listening and that we will be coming forward with some, with some steps that we feel like, um, the business community can take to address some, some systemic challenges that have been for, been in, uh, been in place for people of color. So, uh, stay tuned on that.
Thanks Andre. Whitney, Kamal?
Yeah, for me, I always like to have practicals, right? Uh, I very much echo what everyone said. Um, I challenge you that at your next board member, at your next board meeting, you know, outside the chamber, you serve on different community boards. Look around the table and look at who's at that table and see if you need to start recruiting some additional members of your board. When you're in the workplace, look around at who's sitting at the table with you to make important decisions. Even if someone is at a junior level, you can still say, I think we need a different perspective. I think there's some additional resources we can bring to this team. Do you mind if in our next meeting, we bring in and name some people? Always have a rolodex of people in your mind as you're out in the community meeting with people. Um, and two, like everyone said, you have influence. If you're on this call, you have influence and we need you to use it. Use it in your workplace. Obi mentioned Publix. It's walk around with the confidence. I saw someone in the um chat about how senior leaders, you know, they may feel confident stating on different issues, but when it comes to this, they tend to shrink back. Write letters, write emails to your senior leadership. If if you see them making great steps, applaud them, help them with that confidence and let them know that you support them with this and that they can count on you. When you start to support leaders, when they're kind of feeling a little uneasy, they're gonna remember you and they're gonna pull you in for these difficult conversations. Offer yourself as a voice and as an ally for them for that. But I saw another question about um retaining black talent. And from the friends of mine in my generation, those of us who grew up in Jacksonville, they have left because of that. They wanna be involved in the community, but they don't feel welcome. They wanna get on boards, they wanna move up, but there's this disconnect. And I think the more we start saying, those of us who hire people, it's in your values, but you have to evaluate people on that values. Try to work with your HR teams and see if you can start adding that to, I don't know if y'all do annual reviews or anything like that, but that's a way that then people start perking up, oh, I'm gonna be evaluated on this? This may mess with the race, or this may mess with future employment opportunities. But you've got to hold people accountable in the workplace.
Kamal?
Yeah, I would say very quickly, we all have a platform, so use your platform. Our platforms are different, but with social media, with the ways that we're able to connect with each other, the platform, use that. Use your position, use your power. And some of us have privilege, some of us don't. We don't have enough time to get on that conversation, but if you have your privilege, use it. Um, and if you don't know what to do, you've got myself, you've got Obi, you've got Whitney, you've got Ellen, you've got Andre now, you know some people that you can ask. Um, don't be silent, because that's the same thing as as doing nothing. And if you're blessed to to have money, um, to have extra money that you can give to different organizations, in this chat, there were tons of organizations that people posted about that are doing great work in Jacksonville and Northeast Florida. See if you can give a little bit of extra dollars to those organizations, because it will go a long way um to to fight disparities and to um help inequities in our city.
Thanks, Kamal.
Can I do a shameless plug real quick?
Sure can.
We have many trainers who can come to your office space and train you in many areas of diversity, including LGBT. Thanks.
Thanks, Whitney. I think we're going to wrap it up. There's a lot of questions we didn't get to. Uh, and I think Gracie will talk about this in a minute, but we're, this isn't the end of this. We're gonna keep doing these things. And a lot of the questions that you asked um are gonna shape the the future of these conversations. We're we're able to dig into specific topics based on the questions and make sure that we are bringing um as talented a panelist as we've had today to those future conversations, subject matter experts, so that we can continue to have these conversations. This is just the start of something, and I appreciate uh uh you allowing me to ask you some questions. And I will turn it back over to Gracie, uh, so we can be respectful of everyone's time.
Thank you so much, Ben. Oh, look, I have someone trying to join the meeting right now. Um, I I echo um what Ben just said. Um, this is the start of the conversation, as many of the panelists already shared, and we look forward to your feedback on um, you know, this event and future events. So we are gonna be sending out a post attendee survey and would love to hear if you have any um information on your experience today, as well as future conversations moving forward, or panelists that you would love to hear from. Um, that will be coming out soon. Also, I just wanna thank the panelists so much for being open and honest about these tough conversations, because I know, as I've mentioned before to them, it's it's sensitive information and it's, you know, it impacts us personally, it impacts our community, and we all have, um, you know, personal stories that, um, you know, are difficult to share. So I just not only wanna thank you for sharing those difficult stories, but for also allowing us um the opportunity to um, you know, share, share all of your insight into how we can be um a better, more inclusive, more diverse, and more equitable community. So thank you so much for joining us.